County Planning Board, it is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board. We'll start our meeting with a roll call to account for all of our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton. Ms. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
And I see, Ms. Panero, you're here?
And it also looks like Mr. Array has joined and Mr. Hinton has joined.
Mr. Hinton, thank you so much. I would welcome, I'd like to welcome all the board members and members of the public who are joining us this evening for our second comprehensive zoning map process, 2024 work session. This evening, our objective is to review and vote on the remaining sequestered issues from District Two that we did not finish on Tuesday. Then review and vote on all issues in District Five in an orderly manner. For District Two, we will go through all the remaining sequestered items. For District Five, we will first vote on on items that were not sequestered for further discussion tonight. If issues were not raised as sequesters, we assume that means the Board would like to accept the staff's recommendation. As such, we will take a vote to accept the staff's recommendation on all those issues. After we take sequestered issues one at a time in chronological order, I will ask the board members who requested the item to be sequestered to share any questions or their perspectives on why they do not agree with staff recommendations. Staff then can give rationale on the county's position, and then the board members will have an opportunity to make a motion as they see fit, and then we can have a vote. Board members, our remaining sequestered issues for District Two include the following. Two zero zero eight, zero zero nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two. We will begin with issue two zero zero eight, sequestered by Mr. Heckman, Mr. Pirlo, and Mr. Warren. Mr. Heckman, would you like to start?
Emily, you can start if you'd like.
This wasn't one of mine, thanks, Mark. I think this was you, Todd, and Howard.
Yeah, Howard's not going to be on tonight, he's out of the country, so I don't mind if I, if you want to go. I don't, I don't know.
Go ahead.
So, so this site is across Park Heights Avenue from the site that we approved at the end of the meeting last night, or I guess that was Tuesday, on the suburban site. This site did have four or five people out against it at the meeting, and I believe there was two people for this site. This is slightly different senior housing than what is going to be put into the suburban site. That, that, that site is more for what I would call Florida, you know, people that are going to be here half the year, back and forth, maybe involved in the golf course, a little higher-end living facilities. This facility is a little higher care and directed more at middle-income individuals. As anyone that lives in that area knows, this is a highly Orthodox area. There's very little housing to support that. I was able to speak with a homeowner in that area today, and their biggest concerns are stormwater management, traffic flow, and the size of the facility. And through some conversations I had with the representative, that they're willing to have some covenants that would only allow traffic entering onto Park Heights Avenue to go north, so not crossing Park Heights Avenue. The stormwater management will not go towards the pond or the, the stream in the back. It'll actually flow forward, and it'll be an underground retention. They're prepared to build the building a smaller size, about 180 units versus 200 and some across the street. They also are willing to enter into a covenant for a setback on the, on the rear of the property to give a buffer. With that, I, you know, you know, we need, we need housing, we have an aging population. I don't, I don't want to beat a horse how I feel about housing and the shortage we have in our community. If we're going to approve the higher-end ones across the street, I don't know why we wouldn't approve the, you know, more market rate ones here. And with that, you know, I'll kind of, you know, there's, there's no kosher kitchens in any of the facilities. Howard would have had to recuse himself on this deal anyways, but he is the Chairman of the Board of the the elder area at the hospital there, and, you know, there's just such a shortage of transition or senior housing in this community.
Yeah, I agree with everything Todd is saying, and I'd like to point out that it's in the Planning Department's staff report. It does say that this is consistent with our 2030 master plan that we just voted on. And the, the site has been underutilized for years, so they're, they haven't been able to find a good use for the site since it was vacated. And I think this is a, a good transition type of housing from the commercial area to the residential area. So I think it's a good use.
Any questions or comments from other board members?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
So my comment would be that I'm generally on board with the kind of use that seems like is needed in this area. I totally agree with that. My concern would be with the historic nature of the neighborhood that backs up to it, and that the developer would work in conjunction with those neighbors to build something that is appropriate for size, but also the way it looks curb appeal with regard to the neighborhood that surrounds it. Because the neighborhood that backing up to this, you can see there are historic homes, lovely homes, that people bought into a neighborhood, that this is a historic mansion on the corner, that they expected a certain aesthetic appeal, and I would hope that the builder would do something to complement that.
I actually spoke to a neighbor today, and it seems like the developer has been working with the neighbors and is willing, I believe Todd mentioned this, is willing to do a covenant to address any of the neighbors' concerns, including, you know, a lot of our covenants usually just limit the type of building or the project that goes there, but he's, they're willing to really discuss everything with the neighborhood to make sure that they are as happy as the developer is.
Mark, what are you recommending?
I'm recommending that we approve the zoning request to change it to RAE One.
Is that a motion?
I would like to move that we
I would second that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, it's first and second.
Do we have time for a comment?
Sure.
So between these two developments, we're looking at, am I right, 400 units?
Potentially.
So how many affordable units are included in this?
It's, it's this one's more, and this unit is, and I hate the word affordable, because that's, you know, affordable.
Whatever you're going to call it.
Affordable to who is always the question. But, but that, you know, I, I would say that this is more market rate versus the, across the street. I, I believe 180 units are available in this, this is what
None of these units will help the county comply with their obligation to provide affordable housing, is that correct?
It wouldn't have been required in this area anyways. It's, it's the requirement this county has is to do it north in the areas where would have been the urdle, so.
Well, this is within the urdle.
No, it's outside the urdle is the, the issue, it's mostly in the northern counties.
That's not correct.
That's not correct.
This is within a VCA eligible area, an opportunity zone. And to my knowledge, Ms. Wolfson, they've not had any conversations with our Housing and Community Development Office about affordable units in the, in the location.
Thank you.
And I, just, just to follow up on that, I was looking at the letter that was submitted by the applicant. It says 175 units within six stories situated above parking.
Since, since Kathy, I think since they are willing to work with the neighborhood, I wonder if that was a concern of the neighborhood, that they could address that as well. From what I understand with speaking to the neighbor, they have been super, super willing to do, to make the neighborhood as happy as they are. So maybe that could be something that they could enter into the covenant as well.
Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, we have a motion and a second, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
And congratulations, Mr. Hinton, I see you're on, on your new little addition.
I appreciate it, no, thank you, yes, for me.
Congrats.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. He's not on. Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion carries. Second is zero, is two zero zero nine, and that was raised by Ms. Brophy, Mr. Pirlo, and Ms. Panero. Ms. Brophy, do you want to go first?
Sure, thanks very much. So this is the one that was the petitioner at the public hearing that we had, that he wanted to put a small bike shop on there. There was a very little public testimony, there was like two people for it, one person against it. If you look at the zoning around there, thanks Jen for showing that, there is other BL in the area, you can kind of see that L-shaped area, there's already office buildings, there's a small shopping center in that area. I think as long as, you know, he stays within his lane and in regards to what he's potentially developing, I think that the BL recommendation is okay. If any other board members have concerns of that, I mean, if, if he really is just putting a bike shop in there, BLR would also be fine as well for that use, from my understanding. And I think with, you know, it being up on a main road and farther from some of those houses, it should be pretty unobtrusive.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Brophy. Ms. Panero, you were next.
Yes, I agree with everything that Ms. Brophy just stated. I'm familiar with this area. Like, it is a very cute little shopping area. This is also a very heavy bike area, it's very nice road, and you see bikers on this road very often, so I think it would be a nice addition to the community. And it, it does fit with the surrounding shopping center. And I do believe, Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, the, this is like the, the word of the week, but they are willing to enter into a covenant as well to make sure that it's spelled out exactly what, what the developers intend.
Thank you, Ms. Panero. Board members, any other questions?
I was just going to say that I, I remember when they spoke, and it sounded like the guy's done a ton for the community to like put bike trails on his property and done all kinds of stuff, so seemed like a good citizen and good community guy, so I would support that.
Ms. Wolfson, I see you want to speak.
Well, I mean, we're, okay, so what's in front of it is a shopping center that's been there for like 40 years. The other is, I believe, Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that repurposed train station directly across the street on Old Valley Road right there? We're totally ignoring the fact that it's right on the banks of the Jones Falls in the back, which is still a class, I believe a Class Three drought stream. You know, the, the addition of this impervious surface is a threat to that. It's not appropriate transition from RC2 to intensive BL. It's nice that this guy wants to have a bike shop, but unless he's going to live forever, we can't control what happens in that BL zone. So, you know, I just think that we need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, normally covenants run 25 years with the land, so we could, we could, you know, obviously when he goes in for site plan approval, you could force him to do the covenant. But also, Kathy, what I was saying is to make sure he doesn't do anything like you can in the BL. That's why I was saying we could also recommend just BLR and kind of restrict him to even more limited uses.
Well, somebody's got to be willing to enforce that covenant.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? Not hearing any, anything from the staff?
The Department of Environment had very serious concerns about this location because partially it's in a floodplain. And to Ms. Wolfson's point, the potential impact of more impervious surfaces on the Jones Falls is, again, serious consideration, at least from the environmental protection perspective. The existence of a 40-year-old shopping center was not something that we felt justified expanding the development. And we cannot, I mean, I, I know from what Mr. Pirlo said last night, we could recommend a covenant. A covenant is not guaranteed, and the BL zoning, regardless of whether the intent is a bike shop in the present time, doesn't necessarily require them to retain a bike shop in perpetuity. So we did not support this expansion.
Mr. Lafferty, if we were to get rezoned, BL, or the recommendation that Emily said, they would have to comply with all environmental regulations, obviously, correct? Would that, would they, would that protect the stream?
As I said a moment ago, our environmental protection people had very serious concerns about any redevelopment of this site, regardless of the zoning, but the zoning would encourage or support the premise that it could be redeveloped.
Yeah, it, I mean, I remember this guy talking, and he was doing a, a, he was doing some work on the streams, just doing stream restoration on his property with the project, I mean, I don't know. I'd be willing to make the motion to allow him to have the, I think you said, Emily, BLR, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's more restrictive, that's right.
Yeah, I, I would support the BLR.
Um, so can I ask Director Lafferty, you and this staff a question? So he's asking for the full four acres, right? So, kind of like we talked about on Tuesday, I'm wondering if there's some kind of compromise in regards to keeping a buffer there. That squiggly line, sorry, not technical, that, I'm assuming that is the stream that you were referring to, right, Kathy?
That's the Jones Falls, yes, that goes all the way to the harbor.
So I'm wondering if there's any way you could like slice off some of the back and leave, you know, kind of like we talked about on Tuesday with the, you know, like the motor coach or whatever, like, see how, see how like, is that, is, Jen, is that the?
That's the floodplain.
That's the floodplain.
That's the floodplain. So I'm wondering if you like, I don't know, chop off some of that and just give him the BLR on a piece of that rather than the whole four acres?
How much would you give him?
Well, I, I don't know, like recommended-wise, I mean, how far out away does he have to be from that plane? Do you see what I mean? And I can't, you know, I can't tell like how many acres is in there.
It looks like the request is already, I mean, it doesn't go back to the stream.
Right, but what I'm saying is see how the, I don't know how far of a buffer, you know, like Steve said, with the, the EPS comment about the forest buffer to, you know, kind of the drought stream that Kathy is mentioning, I don't know if there's a certain footage that you need from there that we could like cut off from the back part of that, or I guess the, the top part that's facing the stream in order to give him frontage on the main road, but then the whole back, you know, is buffered from the stream.
Right.
Yeah.
Show the floodplain again, please.
Yeah, Emily did.
What's the floodplain going to look like after the, they do the strain, the stream work? Is, it's, you know, again, I remember him talking about like this, or maybe it was the attorney that spoke on it, that he's yeah, he's doing stream restoration that's going to change the
But it won't change the floodplain, Todd.
And If you raise, if you raise the property level, it would change the floodplain.
Is he doing that in conjunction with DNR? Because, I mean, these, these streams, you just don't go willy-nilly under your own guidance to change the stream.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember all that, I'm, I'm just going off of memory, and my memory's not that good. I just, I do remember there was conversations about it, so I don't, I don't, I don't remember all the details of that.
In the discussion with the different agencies, Environmental Protection Department did not indicate that there's stream restoration going on at that location that could mitigate the impact of the floodplain.
So you're not, you're not allowed to build anywhere near the floodplain? In fact, I think there's like a 100-foot buffer from the floodplain.
Well, and that's what I, that's what I was kind of asking, Mark, is I can't tell acreage, because I mean, everything looks tiny, but if you add like quote-unquote 100-foot buffer, I mean, would that basically cut the property diagonally in half, so it becomes like a two-acre request instead of a four-acre request, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I, I'm not even sure we have to do that, because they're not going to be able to build there anyways.
Yeah, that's what, but, and, and that's what, you know, Katie and I had mentioned before, it's like, I mean, he has to follow whatever environmental impact he's going to have, irregardless of where we build, so I'm just saying to give maybe some of the other board members more comfort that he's not just going to like throw whatever he wants in there, you know, we would do BLR, but also maybe on a smaller piece of that, and not give him a change near that.
Well, I don't know if that, that's necessary, because like we said,
Yeah.
it'll take care of itself, that you don't have to follow.
But why rezone a property that can't be built on? What's the
Part of it, he would build on part of it, not the whole four. It's just, we wouldn't be able to decide how much of that four he can build on until he starts going through the process, right?
We're not environmental experts, we're just here to do, to determine the zoning, and then from here, that's when the, that's when that gets taken care of.
But the zoning, the underlying zoning is supposed to have some principle about redevelopment of the site. And if you're saying that you have four acres and half of that is in a floodplain, and there's no indication that there's an alternative as how they would build on the four acres, because the acreage is going to help determine the size of the structure as well as access and how much, as Mark said, the buffering, so the board can, the board can do it.
But I think Mr. Warren made a motion, is that correct?
I tried to make a motion, I, I would, I would, again, make the motion that we do BLR and leave it up to the councilman to make the decision about the covenants that would go on the property, but, but I didn't, I didn't raise this issue, so it's not something that I'm, but I supported, I, I do remember the guy, and I
Okay, Todd, we heard you made the motion. Is anyone going to second Todd's motion?
Second.
Okay, now we'll do a roll call, Mr. Array. Ms. Brophy.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Heinel.
No.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion does not carry. Okay, next, we have two zero one ten, and I
We, we still have to have something, we gotta, you can't just go away from it, we gotta
Well, I mean, I, if, do you want to go, the staff recommendations, or do you want to come up with something else? You want to come up with something else?
Somebody has to come up with something, either the staff, somebody has to make a motion.
I make a motion that we follow staff recommendations on two dash zero zero nine.
Second.
Okay, all right, I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
No.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
I think you skipped an item, Chair.
I'm sorry, who's this?
Steve.
Oh, Mr. He, I'm sorry, Mr. Heinel, go ahead.
I vote yes.
Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, motion carries, next to two zero ten, this is Mr. Heckman, and
This is just
This is just for the roll call vote.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure he was still good with that. Mr.
Don't we still have to make a motion to accept staff recommendations?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Recused.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next on to two dash zero, one, two, and that's Mr. Heckman.
Madam Chair, may I comment before Mark proceeds with this issue?
Sure.
This is, this and a few that follow after it, I think, uh, thirteen, fourteen, uh, sixteen, uh, are also, uh, regarding the N C zone, which was put on by the councilmen. Uh, we have, uh, established policy and we, uh, same as we did in twenty twenty, um, to oppose the imposition of the N C zone, uh, in part because the intent of the N C zone is to provide for community parks, gardens and natural areas inside the Earl. And each of the locations that have been identified in District Two are already protected because they either belong to the county or to another entity that has an easement on the property. So, um, the board certainly can object to the position of the planning department. I just wanted to make it clear as to where we've come, how we've come to our recommendation in opposing the N C zone that the council members have established.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Mr. Heckman? You're, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, that was the only reason I sequestered those three or four, um, N C zoning requests. So I, um, I withdraw my sequester then.
We need, do we need to take them one at a time, correct, Mr. Lafferty?
Uh, yes, we should.
Okay. So, does there any
Madam Chair, we could, if, if Mr. Heckman is withdrawing, um, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and sixteen, uh, the board could vote on all of them unless someone wants to sequester any of those separately.
I'll make a motion to have staff recommendations for those, whatever, say those issues again.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen and sixteen. Is that acceptable, Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, um, Steve, is sixteen outside the Earl as well? Just checking.
All right. No, that's, that's inside the Earl.
Anyone want a second? Um, Mr. Warren's motion?
Second.
Um, Ms. Wolfson?
Second. I missed just second.
Okay. You gotta remember, I can't see all the pictures. Okay, there, I've got a a, uh, motion and a second, and then we will take a roll call. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yep.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr.
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
A motion carries. Next we have two, zero, one, five, and that was sequestered by Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, so I happen to know a little bit about this. This is, um, an existing, um, business. I, I believe it's a catering facility who wants to expand. And, um, so this, uh, request is S E because that's the only zoning that allows a catering facility, apparently. Um, and there is something in that zoning that says it has to be more than two acres. So that's why there's several properties, um, associated with this request. And, um, if it's an existing business that's growing, I'm all for trying to accommodate them. And you look at Ricehurst Town Road, it's mostly all commercial anyway. So I'm a, I, I would like to see it, um, changed to S E.
Make the motion.
Are there any questions or comments?
But it doesn't have the acreage to be S E. That's why issue twenty is also being introduced.
Right, right.
Okay.
So those two are fifteen and twenty-one, right? They would combine to the over two acres?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Whereas fifteen by itself is not sufficient, I believe.
That's correct.
So would we be making, or would you be making Mr. Heckman a motion on fifteen and twenty-one?
Yes, I, yes. Except twenty-one, I, yeah, I did. I did sequester that. That's correct.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
So are they both O R two now, Mark? And then they both want to go to S E?
Let's see.
Twenty-one is really supposed to be replacing fifteen. Uh, when fifteen was put in, they find out that it didn't meet the requirement of the, of the acreage. And then so later on, they came back and put twenty-one. So twenty-one is replacing fifteen.
Oh, I see.
It, it takes both of the properties.
Cause twenty-one is the one that's the two point oh nine acres, right?
Yes.
So they suck the two in together. Got it? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had to vote for, on both of them or not. So it doesn't matter what fifteen is then.
So you could accept staff recommendation on fifteen?
Okay.
And then if you want to, the S E is twenty-one would be the mechanism.
Well, they both have to match though. Cause when we map it, I think they, they overlap. So as long as staff recommended S E, then both of them can be S E. If not, they can't put a different zone on, the, the zones have to match if they're overlapping. They can't vote for it cause the S, cause this twenty-one actually encompasses fifteen. So if you vote S E on twenty-one, but something else on fifteen, then it's a conflicting map. You can't have two, two different zones. It has to be S E on all, uh, both, both of them.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Meacham.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks.
I, I'll make the motion then to make it, just make fifteen S E.
Second.
Okay, so we're just voting on fifteen? Are we voting on fifteen and twenty-one?
I, I'm fine with making the motion on twenty-one also. How you want to do it.
Would you modify your motion, Todd?
That I, I'm gonna modify that we will move for S, what, whatever, S C or whatever it was.
S C.
S E for fifteen and twenty-one.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, I always like to know what is the department's, what do they want? What, even though it is indicated, I, it, the staff, what is their recommendation? How do they feel? Because they do work so hard. When they come before us, I always like to know how do they feel about?
Um, unfortunately, Joe could not be here tonight, the planner for the area. Um, I don't have anything in my notes, um, regarding sort of what our thinking was here. So I don't know if Steve or Gana want to chime in.
Well, the only thing I would indicate is on fifteen by itself, it does not qualify for S E. Uh, so we could recommend it. Uh, the other property, to my knowledge, is not owned by the same owner. Um, and so, and Jen, if you could verify that. So that gave us some pause to extend S E to a property that's not owned by the individual.
That is, that is.
Is that, am I correct, Jen, on that?
Uh, yes, all, all three are different ownership.
So if it's different, so therefore if they are different, so we cannot combine.
There's nothing to do, you don't have to own something to do zoning.
Right.
Yeah, I think the intention is that they're gonna purchase it once it's zoned. The
I was gonna say, according to the, um, books online, it says staff does not support the requested zoning change. While the request for the zoning change is consistent with the Baltimore County Master Plan twenty thirty, this change does not align with current Baltimore County goals regarding land use, growth, management, resource protection and or economic development.
Okay, well, we have a motion and we have a second. So are you prepared to do a roll call? Well, let's move. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll go to two, zero, one, seven. And that was raised by Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, so this is similar to the one we talked about on Tuesday night, two, zero, zero, three. Um, and I understand the, um, staffs or everybody's concerned, there was some letters written that they were concerned about changing it to B L. Um, I, I would, uh, because B L allows, um, liquor stores and all that kind of stuff. So I would suggest that we not do B L, but we propose doing C B, just like we did on two, two, oh, oh, three.
And this is to allow people to get in and out of the development that's the armory, is that?
Um, no, that was two, zero, zero, three.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is just like this one outlaw line property to just make it all consistent to C B.
Uh, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion.
Second.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, two, zero, two, two, and I believe that was um, Ms. Brophy and Mr. Perlo. Mrs. Bro, Ms. Brophy, you want to start?
I'm sure. So this is the, um, Pikesville Armory site that we're all very familiar with and, um, the petitioner had requested B L C C C, um, which would allow it to become, you know, a mixed use development. It's currently vacant. We all know, you know, the county had purchased it for a dollar and then it transferred to the Pikeville Armory Foundation. Um, it's within, you know, a C R D for Pikesville. It fits with Master Plan twenty thirty. Um, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand why staff recommended against the change, um, but I think that turning a fourteen acre vacant, now vacant property to something that would benefit the community with, you know, potential mixed use makes a lot of sense. So I guess my question for staff is, is there, is there an underlying reason that I'm not reading in these comments that, that the board needs to know about?
Sure. Um, when the councilman put this in, he simultaneously put in legislation that would allow a mix of uses on the site since the site was, uh, zoned D R five, five. Uh, his legislation passed, which enables institutional and other arts and other business activities to take place on the property. Uh, and he advised us that he put this, uh, C Z M P issue in, in case his legislation did not pass. And since the legislation was adopted by the council, we didn't find the need to, and there's no, been no discussion of residential on the site. Uh, we did not find the need to see rezoning of this property.
That, that's correct. The councilman told me that he, I thought he was gonna withdraw the request, so.
Okay, so, so if it allows, and I apologize, Steve, thank you for letting me know. I didn't read the legislation. Now, does that allow any of those uses to change based on public input? Cause obviously there'd be a whole process on public input and design, et cetera. Does, does that legislation allow that? Like you said, it doesn't include residential right now, but because it is really close to M T A and it could potentially become a T O D, I don't know if that would be something that the public would bring up or, or, or how that would occur with the current legislation, but not fixing the underlying zoning.
Well, one, I, like I said, I don't think the property owner has any intent of developing it as residential. And I believe actually in the acquisition from the state of Maryland, uh, it limited or prohibited residential development. Uh, but they are not exempt from any of the other public input processes that are attached to the redevelopment of the site uh, as a private property owner. So there will be opportunities for public input should they decide to install or, or build any other structures, uh, on, on the property.
Okay, thank you. Um, then I, I mean, I can either withdraw it or I can make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Do you want to make a motion, Emily?
Sure.
If there's no other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Um, I'm making a motion to accept staff, excuse me, accept staff recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy? Ms. German?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Um, folks, I, uh, skipped by two, zero, one, eight, which was put in by Mr. Perlo. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts or comments on that?
Uh, let me take a look at it real quick, just as I'll.
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, when Councilman Patoka submitted this issue, it takes in the, uh, total Alston community and the residential around it. Um, and Mr. Patoka, Councilman Patoka actually said that, um, he was concerned about property and wanted the planning department to offer a recommendation for the redevelopment or potential redevelopment, which was well beyond our scopes. Uh, or we believe beyond the scope of the C Z M P process. So we did not seek to support the councilman's, uh, request.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty.
I would move to, uh, accept staff recommendations.
Um, this one overlaps with two dash zero, zero, three and two dash zero, one, seven. So you will have to cut those areas out to S E and then the rest could go to staff recommendation.
Okay, so tell me how to make the motion so I can do that. So, uh,
Accept recommendation for two dash zero, one, eight with the accept. Accept staff recommendation for two dash zero one eight with the exception of two dash zero zero three and two dash zero one seven as SE.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Well stated, Todd.
Uh, she did a great job, didn't she?
Todd, we should all, you should use others.
I, she's coming with me every time. I, I got her, she's, I just signed her up.
Okay, fine. All right, Todd. All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Again, thank you. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, um, yes, but I have a quick question. Uh, two thousand and three and sixteen, that was not SE, was it?
You know, these, these are CB, aren't they?
Yeah, they're CB.
Oh, CB, sorry, yes, you're right, CB.
Oh, you're fired. I'm sorry, I fired.
Todd, I think.
I amend mine to CB for those.
Okay, all right, can you continue? Mr. Hinton.
I think you gotta, you gotta start the, the vote over, I think, cause I amended it. Somebody's gonna have to second it.
Okay, Todd. Um, Ms., um, who's the one that made the motion for Todd?
Uh, we, we made it.
Todd, you just, for one second. Ms. Meacham, can you repeat the motion the way it should be?
Um, so I think Todd amended my motion. Can we go with what he amended or?
Okay, with it, with the new adjustment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Mr., does somebody want a second? Todd's.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Board members, that's the conclusion of our remaining sequestered issues in District Two. We are now moving on to District Five.
Yes.
Board members, our sequestered issue for District Five include the following issues. Five dash zero three, zero four, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, sixty-eight, a hundred and forty-three, a hundred and sixty-one, and a hundred and eighty-four. Before we begin, does anyone have any additional items in District Five that they would like to add to the sequestered list? Not hearing any. May I entertain a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for all non-sequestered District Five issues?
So moved.
Be it moved that the Planning Board accepts the recommendations of the Planning Board staff for the log of issues in District Five, with the exception of the sequestered issues listed by Chairwoman Hafer, Hafer, so.
That's okay.
Second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna be saying all your names in my dreams tonight.
Okay, in alphabetical order, too.
Exactly right.
Don't forget Mr. Heinel. Madam Chair, if I may, uh, just before we get started, I'm not sure that many of the Planning Board members have had a chance to meet one of our newest, um, community planners, Ainsley Pressle, who is, uh, for District Five. Um, Ainsley is here having looked at every one of these issues inside out and backwards. Uh, and will be able to answer questions as we go. But if those of you on the board haven't had a chance to meet Ainsley, uh, you'll be as impressed as we are. So just wanted to introduce her to everybody.
Welcome.
And, and Steve, I want a second, I wanna second that, Steve. I've had, um, the opportunity to meet, to work and meet with her closely. Excellent. We're lucky.
Yep, we are fortunate.
You're working with a great group.
Appreciate that.
Okay, that being said, we're moving on to issue five zero zero three, Ms. Panero and Ms. Brophy. Ms. Panero, you wanna start?
Yes, uh, and I second that, um, Ainsley was very helpful with all of my questions today. Thank you again, Ainsley. Um, this was an interesting one, um, because this is a, a no change. Um, and I, because I believe the applicant or the, the attorney for the applicant, um, I guess they weren't sure if I wanted to proceed, so this was a no. Um, but this is currently, what they're interested in doing is changing the RC five. Um, it's point eight seven acres to BL. Um, as you can see, and there are no comments listed by the Planning Department, and that's because I understand, um, there was no change, so there were really no comments to make. Um, and I don't believe there were any public comment. Um, as you can see, uh, this borders along, uh, Joppa Road. This is current, this was downzoned by Councilman Marks, I believe in the twenty twenty, um, excuse me, yes, twenty twenty, uh, CZMP. The owner was unaware that that was occurring, so he did not, uh, argue it at the time. Um, it is, like I mentioned, uh, currently zoned RC five, which is research conservation, which really doesn't make any sense or ever really happened inside of the Erdle, especially on Joppa Road. Um, I'm also not sure why the councilman would, uh, downzone without the knowledge of the property owner. Um, if you look, expand a little bit, again, this is on Joppa Road. The property is right on to a little strip center with like a pizza shop. Um, as you can see everywhere around, there are no, there is no, um, RC five anywhere near, um, this property. In fact, I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe, and if not, if there are, there aren't many, um, RC designations in the Erdle or in District Five. Um, that's how unusual it is. Um, to do a conservation on Joppa Road, um, makes zero sense. Um, so the owner is looking to, um, be able to develop the property, just like everybody else on Joppa Road, and would want, uh, the point eight seven acres to be BL, which is completely suitable for this location.
Ms. Brophy, is there's anything you'd like to add there?
Yeah, um, just to kinda, um, add to what Katie said, um, Jen, thank you, she's shifting it up. You can see, like Katie mentioned, right across the street, there's already CB, BL. Um, and they are, um, they are amending it to the fact where originally they put in the whole one point nine three acres as same to same, but they're realizing there is residential development that the same owner built on the northern part of the property, that's the DR three point five. So there is already residential up there, so the reason they only want the point eight seven acres, um, is actually to allow a buffer between the residential that's built up there now and then the new, um, BL, that'll be along Joppa Road. So it's the same, it's the same property owner, um, as the petitioner, um, as Katie mentioned. So it's not like he would hurt the houses that he built behind him, and it just makes sense on Joppa Road.
Thank you, Ms. Brophy. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? If not staff, do you have any recommend?
Is it only the point eight seven then, that would go to BL?
That's, that's right, Steve, thank you.
And, and what would, Jen, can you determine what that point eight seven is? Is it only the RC five?
The RC five part? Is that what it was? The entire RC five?
Yeah, it's the entire RC five section.
Okay, Katie or Emily, do you wanna make a motion?
Okay, so wait a minute, so what is, what is this staff recommendation?
They're.
So, sorry, I'll just quickly say, um, so they applied for the same to same. So they didn't indicate a change in zoning at the time of application. However, they later sent, I think it was a little bit of a misunderstanding of how the process worked. They initially sent a justification letter asking to seek the advice of the community and also from the Planning Department on like what a good outcome would be. They just knew they didn't want RC five. And then they later sent a justification letter to say they wanted to change to BL. Um, however, because they initially applied with the same to same, we just said, keep existing zoning.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, amend stack recommendation for just the zero point eight seven acres that's currently zoned as RC five to BL.
I'll second that.
Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, on to. Yes.
Before, before we go on, I, I do have a more general question for the staff, and I wasn't sure when the right time to, to raise it. Man, I've been through a couple of these CZMPs, and for those who've been through more, the amount of acreage that's being proposed or put on the table seems really quite high, and has this ever been done before by anyone?
Yes, my.
The, the last cycle, he downzoned every, um, like even, uh, sidewalk, so it was like a ton last time, so.
It's like over, it was like twelve percent of this entire district is now up for. I, it was just, I was just amazed, you know, it's a hundred and forty-seven issues that the councilman put in. Um, they were either the same or the staff recommended keeping them where they were, so I just, anyway, I just did not wanted to go unnoticed that it's just, it's a lot. I mean, the council, council committee's gonna see they'll do within one, but.
Mr. Halipka, he did the same thing last, last cycle. Pretty much.
He did a better job this cycle than last cycle. This last cycle, he had people really freaked out.
Okay. Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Halipka?
I, I just didn't want it to go unremarked, it just seemed like an excessive, I know, nobody else was proposing ten percent of their district or more.
Okay, next, let's move on to five zero zero four, Ms. German.
So it's interesting that we're moving on to a hundred and thirty acres. Um, the Essex Middle River Coordinating Council strongly supports downzoning. So the requested zoning in acreage of a hundred and thirty, almost a hundred and thirty-one acres. Um, I raised this because I think we need to just, um, address it, considering that a, uh, umbrella community organization strongly supports the downzoning.
Are you looking for, are you raising this for comment? Planning Board members, or are you asking for kind of more reasoning from the department?
Um, I would be interested in the, the position of the department staff, Ainsley.
Okay, sure. Um, so for this one, there's, there's quite a few reasons that led us to, uh, suggest that the zoning stay the same. The first is that the Essex Sustainable Community Plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-two identified this property, the Chesapeake Enterprise Zone, as a, um, potential economic strength for the district, uh, for District Five, because it offers incentives for, you know, major industrial, um, investment and job creation in the area. It has a, a long history of, um, industrial use and job creation. So that was something, um, the requested zoning changes kind of act in direct opposition to that. Um, and then also they're inconsistent, inconsistent with the master plan and the preserve. On top of all that, they're also incompatible with the surrounding area. Um, there's no RC zones adjacent to the issue boundary. Um, there's no RC touching on any side. And there's Martin State Airport and other industrial uses nearby that kind of led us to, um, feel that the requested changes were not necessarily conducive, um, with the area.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, but, do, do you know, was the goal basically to land lock in Lockheed? And that's what it appears they're doing with their proposals.
Um, Scott, I, what I can say about that is there's, you know, I mean, it's obviously, it's a hundred and thirty acres right there in the heart of, uh, that community. So there, I think the, the goal is to try to get the least amount of density, whatever would happen there. I mean, honestly, I've, I've heard it, uh, talked about for a new high school. So I mean, I think there's a lot of talk about that property in that community. Um, I can just say that that umbrella organization, which I think is very well represented in that community, strongly supports downzoning.
This is Chris, uh, we just mentioned about that community as that, that, that ostensibly umbrella organization is the same group that brought those design standards to us a couple of months ago. And when we asked for additional information to show how much support they received from the actual community associations themselves, they were not forthcoming with that information. So I, I suspect there's a lot of free agents going on in that umbrella organization, just, just to remind everyone of that.
And Chris, that's a, I think that's a very valid, good reminder.
Madam Chair, if I may also add, that I know that there's been a lot of, uh, just been a lot of environmental cleanup along, uh, Darkhead Creek, uh, that has been required of, of Lockheed. I know in talking with, uh, Bob Bendler, who is president of EMRCC, they're looking to preserve as much land as possible from future development. Uh, the challenge, however, is the, as Ainsley described very well, it is an enterprise zone, and it is probably the most vibrant, um, business center in this part of the county. Um, the county has just recently lured a, a large developer called Rocket Lab that literally is gonna be making industrial, industrially making parts for rockets. So this is one site that has been critical to retain from an economic development perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. All right, any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we retain staff recommendations.
Second.
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 Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're on to issue five dash zero zero nine, Mister Warren.
So this is a site, um. It is currently CB, uh. It uh, it's surrounded completely by BL zoning, also BLAS. They're requesting BLAS, I realize the county does not want to issue any BLAS. And, you know, in some cases, I agree with that, I, I don't, you know. I, I do like rural farms and Wawa's, uh, but maybe we could reutilize some of the other ones we already have. And get rid of some of them, uh, and put new, uh, new spaces in, but. Uh, in this case, we have a dilapidated center that's, that's non-performing. So I would, I would be willing to support BLAS. I'd also be willing to do BL just to, to try to revive the center. So my, my preference would be to give them BLAS, but I would fall back to BL on this site.
And what is this staff recommendation?
So, um, the staff recommendation is to keep existing zoning, um, per the director's report, we. Do not support AS, um, due to immunity concerns about, you know, additional. AS districts.
And also there are two gas stations next door. One is like one thousand feet of, of the site.
Right?
Yeah. Again, I, I, I would, I would support the BL, uh, if we don't want to give the AS, I, I do understand the, the position of the county.
Okay, Miss. And go ahead.
I would second that.
Didn't the county, did the staff recommend BL?
Uh, they, they recommended CB, I believe.
So, um, the request was for BLAS. And our final staff recommendation, as listed in the log of issues, is BL for one point six two acres. And BLAS for point zero two acres, which is probably a sliver. So we did recommend BL on this one.
And I'll, I'll recommend, I'll take staff's recommendations.
Okay, um, Ms., do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mister Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mister Hayfer?
Yes.
Mister Heckman?
Yes.
Mister Heinel?
Yes.
Mister Hinton?
Yes.
Mister Halepka?
Yes.
Mister McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero? Mister Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Next is five dash zero one oh, Mister Warren.
Yeah, this is a local restaurant, um, over in the area called Carson's Creekside. Eaten there many times, it's a very popular restaurant, bar restaurant on the water. Like a number of the ones in that area, uh, and they want to expand their, um. Uh, facility, uh. Like other, uh, restaurants in the area, um. On the east side of the county, um, and they're, um. They're unable with their current zoning, I did have an opportunity to speak to, uh, Steve about this. At the la, or at the last second, and I, I apologize, I'm switching jobs, so like I didn't have time to get to him earlier. But it, uh, it's, it's really a small portion that would switch to BL. From DR three point five. Steve, I know you had some comments on it, but I believe in supporting small businesses like we did with the, the catering company, and I don't think this is. This is inconsistent with what we've done. Um, there, it's not already in place there along the water, but I know you said there's some concerns and I'll, I'll let you address those.
Well, yeah, and thanks for the call ahead of time, Todd, so we could chat. According to our Environmental Protection Sustainability Department. Uh, issue boundary would be wholly within the critical area and therefore there would be significant. Uh, use restrictions. Uh, probably would be restricted from actually building an outdoor dining. Facility or, uh, site on this location, so. In light of depth's opposition and recommendation, we decided to stay with the existing zoning, although we recognize. Um, that the community is fully supportive of it because it's been a very, it's been a staple in the community for many, many years. But we defer to our department of environmental protection.
And with the, I, I'm gonna still make the motion and let them deal with, with the depths on. What they can and can't do, I, I appreciate that, Steve, I just think that we. I, I said, I, I'm a big guy, but I've eaten this place a lot, lot, and it's like, it's a cool little area on the water and we should, we should. If we're gonna preserve. The, the water down there, it's, it's, we should be able to enjoy it, so I believe we should have it, so. I'll make the motion to. To allow the BL zoning on the point, point one three.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Mister Array?
Uh, can you come back to me, I'm still thinking.
Okay, okay, absolutely, Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mister Hayfer?
Um, who, who owns the houses on the DR three point five?
I don't think there are any houses on the three point five.
Um, John Zorzitz, um, it's not homeowner occupied, it says.
Did they, did anyone submit comments from that, from them?
So during the application, um, they told us that actually, um. Employees or family members. Either leave or, um, occupy the, those dwellings.
And we didn't receive any opposition, like I didn't receive any emails or calls in opposition to this particular issue.
Does BL allow, um, outdoor music?
I believe it needs to be within a CRD. But I'm not one hundred percent sure.
What's the current zoning, DR three five?
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Mister, Mister Heckman?
Yes.
Mister Heinel?
Yes.
Mister Hinton?
Uh, yes.
Mister Halepka?
Yes.
Mister McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Panero? She was having trouble with her computer, she might not be on yet. Mister Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, Mister Array, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Five dash zero one one, Mister Warren.
I'm on a, I'm on a roll here, so, um. So, the, now, this one I, I, I put up because of the school bus thing, um. I, I did talk to, uh, to Steve about this and. Now I'm kinda in the middle of where I feel about it, but, uh. The, the challenges we have, just like we had in my district where I approved the, the school buses. Is the school buses need to be in the communities to pick the kids up. Um, so, kinda think we gotta do something to give them that. Uh, Steve did bring up some really good points that this is like down a, you know. Kinda on a little peninsula and maybe if we're gonna do it, maybe this isn't the place to do it, um. So I'm a little conflicted in my own, uh, thought, but, you know, I. Again, I, I, you know. My wife's a teacher, you know, we got, you know, gotta have, we gotta get kids to school, so. And no one, no one wants a school bus around them. Um, but, you know, they want their kids picked up and safe, so, um, I would support. Um, this recommendation, uh, to go to BL and BM to allow them to do this. I don't have enough information because I, I wasn't able, like, and when I had, I was able to talk to the community and the councilman. About some kind of, uh, buffers, but obviously if there's housing near this, you know, I would want there to be a substantial buffer. You know, fifteen feet, some kind of fencing that would, uh, cover up what's there, but. Believe we gotta kinda have it, so, uh, but I'll let, Steve, Steve has some really good points on it, so I'll let Steve.
Actually, I'll defer to the expert, Ms. Pressle.
Um, okay, so. This is a school, it's currently a school bus storage lot, um, but it was approved. Using a special exception in nineteen eighty seven, and at the time of its approval, it only had ten school buses. Um, they're looking to expand. Uh, an additional thirty school buses, um, in addition to their current lot and they're currently operating out of compliance. Um, kind of assuming, I guess, that they'll be able to get this zoning change. Um, I had a community member who's, uh, very much opposed to this and was sending me a lot of. Different information about it, she's a nurse and, um, she even got some of her neighbors to sign. A petition about, um, some. Health concerns, human health concerns about emissions and things like that, so. Um, but ultimately, I mean. Our, as an apartment, um, the issue that we discussed on Tuesday in District One was very similar. This, this is surrounded by residential area and like I said, even with that, the zoning change to, to BM. Um, the only reason they would be able to operate is because of the ex, expansion of a, of a, or, I guess. The, um, the special exception, basically, so ultimately for those reasons, um, we did not support zoning change.
I move, we support staff. Recommend this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion?
Sorry, Nancy, before you vote, um, can I ask you a question, Ainsley, um? On my notes, there was only like one person opposed to it in the public hearing, but I'm sure you got emails and stuff afterwards. What is the correct zoning for bus storage for them to not have a special exception, is it like ML or MH or something?
I, I do not know off the top of my head, after.
I think that's what, I think that's what the Woodland was on Tuesday, do you remember, Todd? I can't remember.
It was something weird, it was like, uh, BR or so, there was some other zoning, I forget what it was, but it wasn't, I think it was BR. I can look it up, I have it here somewhere.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is because, so whether or not we grant. The change, they still have to have a special exception, is that right?
So my understanding, um, through conversations with zoning is that because they own these two parcels. Uh, the special exception on the one lot, if they were granted the same zoning, is that it would be extended. But I, I mean, I would have to. Confirm that, but what, that's what I have, um, in my notes from, from when I discussed that with the zoning office.
Yeah, because I mean, similar to Todd, I mean, look, I, I understand, like, a lot of people don't want buses near them, but. We have to have the school buses to get the kids to school, so if they still have to. If the board, if we still recommend this change, they'd still have to go through a special exception hearing. Right? And then they'd have to potentially put buffers in, et cetera, that type of thing.
Well, no, my understanding is that the special exception from nineteen eighty seven would be expanded to the adjacent lot if they. Received this zoning change.
Oh, automatically.
That is what I was told by the zoning office, I would need to confirm, but, because this was a while ago that I had this conversation, but that's what I have in my notes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and we have a second, I will take a roll call. Mister Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mister Hayfer?
Now, this motion is to, uh, take the staff recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Uh, yes, I support that.
Mister Heckman?
Yes.
Mister Heinel?
Yes.
Mister Hinton?
Yes.
Mister Halepka?
Yes.
Mister McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Mister Warren, you're up next with five zero one two.
Eventually we'll get out of this, alright, so, um. As I do, I go to, uh, Wise Market and shop and I use, uh, my gas points to save myself some money. Um, and what they're attempting to do here is, is put a, um. A gas pump, uh, at the supermarket. And, uh.
I believe that's a different issue, Mister Warren.
Is that twenty? I have that as twenty, am I?
Aren't we on, we're on twelve.
Sorry, I want to, I thought, I thought I was on twenty already, I apologize. Uh, let me get to twelve, what my opinion is here, hold on one second. I apologize, guys, I, I read the one before, before I read this one, so I just have to make sure I'm. Uh, okay, so this is a commercial property. Um, that, um. Needs BR zoning for parking. Uh, it's currently BL today, other than a sliver of DR sixteen, um. And for commercial use, they need to have the BR zoning. To provide for their, their parking of, of their vehicles, um. And store some equipment on the property. I remember, uh, there was, uh, very little, uh, negative outcry, I think, on this one. Uh, they, you know, I've heard from counselor, from their. Um, their, uh, representative that they've met with the, the, um, Middle River Civil Council. Um, and, and their support, they support this. Uh, both times. Uh, there was no opposition to the rezoning at the planning board, uh, hearing, to, to my knowledge, so. Uh, again, in an effort to support business. Um, I would support. The change from BL to BR, so I would make the motion. To, um, support BR for the one point nine seven acres.
And staff recommendation?
So we actually had a little bit different of an understanding on this one, um, the justification letter said that they wanted a contractor equipment. Storage yard, not, um, just for parking. Um, so we recommended that. The zoning stay the same, it's currently BL and we, um, recommended that it stay the same.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So, Ainsley, can you further clarify, you, you recommend that it stay the same because. That would allow them to do the storage that they want?
Um, so a BR zoning alone would not allow for a contractor equipment storage yard, you would also need a special exception. So, um, that, in combination with that, we found it inconsistent with the master plan due to the place type. Of this, um, area is connected neighborhood. Of this, um, area is connected neighborhood. Um, and we didn't necessarily feel that, uh. Contractor equipment storage yard was the best use for this space.
There's no other questions. Mr. Warren has a motion. Does anyone second his motion?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Array.
No.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
No.
Mr. Halipka.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Ms. Panero.
No.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
A motion does not carry. So. May I entertain another motion?
Accept staff.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German. Ms. German. Mr. Hay.
Sorry, Nancy, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hayfer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we're on to five dash zero one nine, and that's Ms. Panero.
Um, so this has changed slightly from what was requested to what the owner would be okay with. Um, the owner currently wants to rezone a portion of his property to ML. Um, to park. Vehicles and destroy building materials. Um, the owner, what he wants to have as ML would only be about a half of an acre now along the driveway. Um, this would allow plenty, so on the. I don't know where north, south is, but, um, that, like, the, the. Let's say the right-hand side of the property. Um, is where he would want to. The, about half an acre to be zoned ML. Uh, there will be no manufacturing taking place here. It would strictly be used for, uh, parking of one vehicle and destroy building materials. Um, the owner would be willing to, uh, work with the community for a covenant to make sure that everything is. You know, up above and, and, and what he says. Um. ML actually is in the community, in the area, as you can see. Um, so it's, this is Philadelphia Road, so it certainly could fit. Um, the half an acre of the entire, of the two point, uh, excuse me, almost four acre property. Would allow for them to put up a buffer of screens. Um, if they needed to, per the covenant. And, um, they would be, they would be more than happy with that half acre along the driveway.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So exactly which part of the property, what, which part of the property, Katie, are they asking for, for that one acre change now?
So if we can, um. So right along the driveway here. So the driveway enters in, I believe, from Philadelphia Road. So it would be located along here, and then they would be able to put up. Um. You know, what was appropriate for that property for the, to, to block. If ne- if necessary. They've owned the property for thirty years, um. So they've, they've been there for, for quite some time.
Do they, do they live on the property?
That's a really good question, Kathy. I do not know that. Plant, the, the planning staff, do you, are you aware of that information?
I do not.
It says someone are occupied.
Oh, really?
I do believe they live there. Someone lives there.
Yeah. I'd see on my notes during the hearings, uh, there was support for this. On, uh, two twenty-two hearing.
Um.
That was by the owner. That was the petition.
I'm, I'm showing seven, six testified against it.
Yeah, and I, my notes indicate that the community, the White Marsh, uh, Community Council, um, opposes it as well. They don't want large industrial. Sites there and. They, and I actually experienced this myself. They carry a lot of dirt out on the road. So, um, they're not always like. Good neighbors and I, I understand the covenant part. But I think my new learning tonight is that those covenants really cannot be enforced.
I can elaborate a little bit on the community opposition on this one, um, so. Yeah, this business has been there for a very long time. However, um, they've been out of compliance and they've had several code violations that run back to as far as two thousand eight. With the most recent being filed in, um, September twenty twenty-three. Mostly being, running a business in a residential zone. Um, Katie did point out that there is ML across the street. However, everything on this side of Philadelphia Road and, and behind is re- residential. And this property is very exposed when you turn the corner on Joppa Road, like. Between Joppa Road and Philadelphia, you can see. Like, there's no tree coverage, there's really nothing, and they've had a half-built dwelling there. For a very long time. I heard from a lot of community members that were not happy with kind of the upkeep of this property, um. And just felt as if it, it wasn't really up, up to code. Um, hence all the code violations that were being filed. Um, additionally, the place type here is established neighborhood, so. That is ultimately why we, um, as a department, suggested that the zoning stay DR two H, um. Rather than changing to ML.
And Ainsley, I think that would make the community very happy.
Yeah, I, I, there was a lot of community opposition to.
Yeah.
Property owner.
Can I ask a question just about, um. What you talked about, the zoning, the, the violations, so were they actually? Are you talking about just the community filing a zoning complaint against them, or were these things actually sustained? By the investigators who went out and looked? Because the, you know, that, that, that's a very different. It's a very different, uh. Scenario, you know, where filed versus sustained.
Yeah, I agree. Um, they do carry different. Importance. In the notes that I have in front of me, I just have. That, you know, it was known that they were out of compliance and that there were several code violations that, that run, again, run back to two thousand eight, so. And the most recent filed being in September twenty twenty-three, I. I'm, don't have in front of me, um, what the response was from the zoning office.
Yeah.
From my recollection, they were, um. They were filed, but I believe they were all closed.
What that suggests is that they were cited for being in violation and could have come into compliance rather than actually have it defined. Because the code, code enforcement folks give a period of time for compliance.
Yeah, but they also should close them because nothing was found, and it could just be angry neighbors filing complaints against somebody they don't love.
Correct. That's true.
And I do, I do think that they were trying to be, um, getting into compliance, hence the rezoning. And again, they filed, pretend the whole property re-zoned, but they've rethought that and realized, I don't, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying they. Maybe they had conversations with. Neighbors, or maybe they listened to the neighbors at the meeting. Um, and that's why they now, they're only asking for a very small portion of the property. To be, um, uh, to be rezoned to ML.
How, how, how long has this business been there?
Twenty years.
Yeah, twenty years.
Oh, yeah.
I move, accept staff.
Kate, Katie, I have a concern about what you've described, which is a little bit inexact. In order to map what the changes would be. Um, we know that the total property is three point nine three acres. But for us to advance a recommendation from the planning board to the council. Uh, it's difficult to know if you're talking about half an acre, one acre. You know, how much of the property is being proposed to be included in a new zoning classification? And that's, that, that's tough then for us to.
I think Wayne just motioned for a staff recommendation. I think, I think that was.
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
Are we still having?
Um, there's, there, if you go on to the, um, citizen access site. There's been multiple code violations by this business since going back as far as twenty seventeen. And as recently as twenty twenty-three. And right now, they're, um. 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 April fourth, there was a co- co- constituent complaint.
So I know we have a motion and we have a second, but if there's any other questions, let everybody ask before we go for a vote.
Yeah.
Kathy, just a comment about what you were saying, though. I mean, similar to what Chris Hayfer had mentioned, I mean. Complaints are complaints. It's just, it depends on how many of them founded and how many of them were complied with after the fact. But my only thought is, and, and Katie, I don't know the details about this, but. If ML is right across the road, kind of to the bottom, right, I mean. Just to Director Lafferty's question, I mean, wouldn't the acre that would be cut off for equipment? Storage be completely away from all the residences, like, almost like somewhere in the middle of that towards the ML zone? So that the people on top of them and the people on the bottom, and I'm looking at the screenshot here. Don't get affected by it, right? Like, that would make the most sense, would be that. It would be like an acre along Philadelphia. More towards all that forestry and other things that's already zoned ML, but I don't know how much. An acre would look like there.
If, if, it would only be a half of an acre, vice versa, I, I misspoke, I apologize. It would be a half an acre along the driveway in the northeast corner.
Yeah, but that's like really close to that house that's there, which is why I'm saying, like, if they need a half acre, it would actually, if they have that whole L-shaped. Piece of land, wouldn't it be more neighbor-friendly to have it? More towards the ML zone, kind of where Jen's. Cursor is, and then like put a half acre there, and then that way the rest of his property is basically a giant buffer.
Emily, I, I'm. I, I'm real familiar with this area. Philadelphia Road is just a very, very unusual. Roadway in that there's probably everything you can imagine. On one side or the other. Of that roadway.
Okay.
But these, but these, so, you know, it's kind of hard to be logical about, okay, if we have. Zoning here and across the street is, is, it makes sense to have the same zoning. It's really hard to do that along Philadelphia Road. But these folks have not been the best neighbors. So. That's kind of what I'm going with, and the, the community's not happy with them.
But is that because, do we have a pig farm scenario here where people move into the country and they're next to the pig farm? And all of a sudden, the pig farm that's been there fifty years is a bad neighbor?
I, you know. Chris, I. Chris, I do not think that is the case here, no.
That, that was my fear, Chris, was the same thing, and what I was saying before was. I was adamant to provide zoning to build houses there. Uh, on Philadelphia Road. I know during last cycle, I think we, we approved a bunch of stuff on forty in Philadelphia Road there. And then, you know, now that they have it, they don't want anyone else. This guy's been there for twenty-plus years. Running his business, and now we're saying. You know, you, you, you can't do it, um.
Okay, Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren, we, we've, we've had a lot of discussion. And there's some.
I didn't discuss a lot. I, I should have had a minute to speak, but thank, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
These were all really great questions. It's, it's, it's a tricky property. And a tricky area.
And Emily, I'm sure that, um, if that was what was decided to be best, to be more neighborly. I'm sure that that would be sufficient with them. But thank, thank you for that creative, um, solution.
Sure, I, I, and what would that look like, Jen, if you just like drew like a half acre box in there? Just so that the board could get like a little bit of a visual.
Emily, I do just want to say that the entire property is exposed, like, all behind on Joppa Road. Those are all houses that are facing the property. So I don't know that it would make it, I, I don't want to, you know. Veto your decision. It's, if, if you like that idea, I just want to purely say that, like, when I did a site visit here, you round the corner in a residential. And you see the full property, it, so I don't think it's as like hidden, like that wooded section that you see.
Oh, no, that's helpful, and that's helpful, just like when Bev was explaining it to me, too. I just, it's more just me trying to get a visual of what a half an acre would look like there.
And Emily, the house to the left, the house ownership property, that's his house. I don't, I know you mentioned that it was so too close to a house. But the drive.
I meant the one up top.
Okay.
Yeah, Jen zooms out, the one, there's like a house up top, that's what I meant.
Oh, this one?
And that one up to the top, right?
Okay, because I.
See that house there? That's what I was talking about.
Along, I believe, um, a- along the, the forest buffer, or the, the, a few of the trees, certainly not a forest, but. Along the trees, along that driveway there.
Got it. So is that a half acre, Jen? Is that what it looks like?
Yeah, that's a half acre.
Okay, so you could technically like shift that down and stuff like that even farther, but, no, no, I appreciate, um. I appreciate the site insight from Bev and Ainsley, too. That's helpful.
Okay, now we have a motion and we have a second, and it's to accept staff recommendations. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Hinton.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Mr., Ms. Panero.
No.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
No. So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I apologize.
Uh, Chairwoman, I'd like to change my vote.
Okay.
Me as well, um, I was misunderstanding the motion. So I would like to change my.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So Mr. Hinton, you're gonna go no?
Correct.
And then, and then Mr. Heinel, you're gonna go no?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Can we, is that? Madam Chair, is it okay to repeat, since they did not respond? Can they, can, can someone repeat the motion so that they can understand?
The motion was to accept staff's recommendation.
Right.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six, two, three. So I have six to six.
Yeah, that's what I got as well. Crystal.
Me too.
This is Courtney.
All right, I'm gonna say. No.
Ms. Happ.
Yes.
May I just say that I believe this is the first and only issue. So far during the CZMP process. That a vote has come through while there's, uh, has been motioned, when there's still discussion going on. And this is also, I believe, the first time where the petition of the person who sequestered the issue does not get to bring forward their motion prior. So I think both of those things were not really, uh, in, in what we typically do here. When a discussion is still ongoing, I don't think a motion should be called. It's a rush.
I apologize. I apologize, but people called for a motion. I. I, 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 I made an error. I made an error and I a hundred percent admit I made an error.
Thank you. I, and I don't think the error was, was your fault.
Robert, it's a vote order. You make a motion, then you discuss it.
I made an error. So.
We need a motion.
Can we?
I now motion to, um, have the northeast corner along the driveway, a half an acre to be, to be zoned, um, ML.
Is that what was, is that what was drawn? Is that what Katie had, or Emily had drawn?
I believe Emily was drawing what, excuse me, not Emily, Ainsley was just drawing what a, um, half acre is, but I, I would imagine if that is what would work and only work, that the owner would be okay with that.
Well, can that be the motion? Can you make that motion?
Sure, that the box that Ainsley drew previously of a half an acre, um, would, uh, be zoned ML.
Um, so the last motion, Nancy, didn't everyone, didn't you vote to end that to, you said no for your vote? So it was.
I said no for my vote, so it would have gone, there would have been another motion anyways.
Prior motion, Jen, was for staff recommendation, which was rejected. So are, are you saying now, Katie, that the, uh, half acre that Jen Meacham laid out along Philadelphia Road is the half acre that we're supposed to map?
Yes.
I would, I would support that. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Mr. Array.
Matt and Chair, if I may, first, so the storage will be right along the front of Philadelphia Road and not upon the remaining part of the property. Is that correct? We, this is a mapping exercise, so we need to know where we're mapping a change. And if it's not the entirety of the property, there needs to be specification as to where the half acre is going to be mapped. And Jen laid out a half acre, not arbitrarily, but just to show how much land would be covered by a half acre. So is that the half acre that you're requesting or do you want it more lateral along the driveway? Or we, we need to have some idea, please.
Well, the motion, um, the motion was to do, um, what, what, um, Ms. Meacham drew. I don't know if, so I don't, and then we had a second, so I don't know if we have to vote on that. I.
Yeah, Katie, I.
Okay, so that looked like it was like a half acre between the two kind of driveway areas on the frontage of the property to Philadelphia Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna let you all know in advance that that community is really gonna be unhappy about that.
Bev, do you think?
Right, right, right there, you know, right there, right on Philadelphia Road, they're already, you know, kind of crazed about the fact that the, a lot of dirt goes out there. It's, it's, you know, that it really is kind of an industrial site. And again, it's a tricky community because there's a mishmash of everything, but the, the community's pretty, that organization's pretty active and pretty aggressive. So I'm just giving you a heads up that that's not gonna be a, a decision that's gonna be well received.
Beverly, I do, I do agree with you because, you know, I live right here too. And I know the area, I, I think I do agree with what you are saying. So we should be rethink.
Why, why are we really pushing this?
To make the change?
Because the person owns the property and that's what they want?
And they've owned it for a long time and ran their business there. That's why I would do it.
And they have not been very cooperative yet.
You know, Todd, I, I get that and I, I agree that, you know, we, we need to factor in those kinds of things, long-term property owners. But they haven't always been the best neighbors. That's the part that I'm struggling with.
Yeah. Is this going to allow them also to continue to be in violation of rules?
No, I actually think this would happen in compliance.
Yeah, because from what I see that they are not responsible. They don't respond to violations. What is it going to do to give them more clarity to continue to do anything that they want? And the neighbors may not be happy. Who is going to enforce? Who's going to, how are we going to make sure that already they are already behind in violations? And we are going to give them additional room to continue to violate rules?
Hey, this is Chris. Just a couple of things. One, Philadelphia Road in that area is already a hodgepodge of things. I mean, there's, um, uh, businesses on that right-hand side as you're going north that you can see from the road. I mean, they're not really hidden. Um, and, um, you know, we're, we're assuming that all of these alleged violations were actually sustained. And, and I'm in a community where people will routinely go to war with each other just with frivolous, uh, complaints. So, you know, we'd have to really dig into this to see what is, what is actual and what is, what is artificial. Um, and I, and remember, we're just making a recommendation. Ultimately, it's the council person who's gonna make the ultimate decision, not us.
I call for a vote.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lafferty, the problem with the vote that Katie had was that you've got to figure out where to put that acre, where to put that property? Is that it?
Yep.
We need to be specific about what's being mapped and she, as I recall, indicated that that, uh, what Jen, Jennifer Meacham laid out along the front was uh, acceptable to her as far as what we map and move forward.
I, I actually don't think that's the best use. I, um, and I, I actually somewhat agree with Bev that it's right on Philadelphia Road and maybe not gonna make the neighbor, neighbors the most happy. Originally, it was the northeast corner along the driveway. So I don't know if we can map that.
So is it south of the, is it to the bottom of the driveway going up towards the existing prop, uh, existing structure? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. From, from the exist, the existing structure to Philadelphia Road.
Philadelphia Road. So it actually would allow storage along Philadelphia Road as well as along the driveway?
No, just the driveway, just the driveway.
Steve, I have a question.
Well, Peter, before that, Katie, look at what Jennifer's putting up and see what it is you want because all due respect, you're not making it easier for us to actually do what we need to do. If you want a county councilman to figure out, that's fine. But I mean, is that, you, you need to give us something specific.
And I have, I said.
Is it kind of, Katie, is it kind of like this up the driveway to the house? This is not quite five acres. This is like point three acres or point five acres. It's point three, but it would be kind of something like up to the house, up the driveway?
Yes.
To the road, to the house, and then maybe out a little bit more?
Further past the house possibly, not, not into, like, we don't wanna.
Okay, so like up a little bit more, but this, this width is pretty good?
Yes. That is perfect. That was the original intent.
Yeah, but. Then modify your motion and I'll second it.
Please let me finish mapping before we have a motion. So people are really voting on.
Yeah, so my concern is that why? I don't think we are qualified to sit here and to map our things that the landowner, we don't know what I, that he's going to make, could use. We can't just sit here and map and say, this is what we keep, or where we want them to be. Is there a way that the department staff can meet during this exercise before you come to boarding to see? You meet with the landowner to see, to try to come up with different options, to sit here and to try to draw where we want them to be?
Ms. Mr. Array, Mr. Array, uh, the property owner, their representatives have had plenty of time to come in and talk to the members of our department and sit down and remap this if that's what they intended to do.
Right.
They did not, they did not do that and we are now caught in the opportunity to remap in front of you tonight.
I don't think.
Failing, failing to come in to, to talk with us ahead of time means that you are in the position of needing to make a decision soon.
It's, and it doesn't, if they don't meet with you, it means they are not really interested to make the change. And.
Fair, Mr. Array. I, can we just do the motion and move on?
Well, Katie, like you said before, if there's discussion, we shouldn't move forward until we finish discussion. Uh, Kathy, Ms. Wolfson?
Just very quickly, has this, has the zoning on this property changed since these people purchased this property 30 years ago?
I believe not. I will pull up the.
So they knew what the limitations were on the land for the entire time that they've owned it. And that's my comment. And I'm, I'm gonna add to that, Kath, that they haven't actually been great neighbors either to the community.
Um, so the last CZMP that involved this property was the year 2000, um, which I believe is prior to when they owned it. Yeah, that would be prior to when they owned it. And like I said, um, if they've owned it for roughly 20 years and there's been, um, 16 years of, um, the code violations.
Okay, now with all that being said, final time, is there any other questions or comments before we move forward? Not hearing any? We have a motion, we have a second. Everybody understands? Mr. Array.
What is the motion, Madam Chair?
Katie, do you want to repeat it?
The motion is to rezone the portion shown in yellow. ML.
All right, then, Mr. Warren, you've seconded that?
I've seconded it. Yes, I have.
Okay, Mr. Array.
No.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Heinal.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
No.
Mr. Halipka.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion does not carry. So we're gonna need another motion.
I move to accept staff recommendation. Second.
Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinal.
No.
Mr. Hinton.
No.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
No.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next, we're moving on to 5020. Mr. Warren.
I, I get to talk about the gas station now. Um, I've done earlier, so. Uh, as I, as I previously stated, it's a, it's a grocery store gas station in the parking lot of an existing grocery store. I know that, you know, the county's position is to not give, uh, AS to any site, but if there's anywhere that we should do it, this is definitely the place that we should uh, provide. It's already in the existing parking lot. It's in a grocery store. Um, I have a Wawa right next to me. They do a great job. The gas station area is clean. Uh, it's always well lit. Uh, they actually closed the gas station at nighttime, so it's really only open when the, the stores are open. So I'm, I'm in support of allowing them to have um, the zoning on the site, which is, uh, I have to find it in my notes here. Um, it's like BLR or 20, uh, B, BLR 3.54 and BRAS 1.15.
Any discussion?
What, what is this staff recommendation?
Uh, keep existing zoning, which is.
BLR for the full site.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Yeah.
Mr. Array, the, the county is never going to approve or, or support AS, so it's, it's gonna be that on everyone that's an AS site, so.
Okay.
Uh, does anyone know if, if they put the gas station in, are they gonna improve the ingress and egress there on Joppa Road? Because that is very challenging right now.
I, I actually don't know that, Chris. I don't have that answer. I don't know that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Not, Todd, do you want to make a motion?
I make the motion to, uh, provide the user with the zoning of MLR for 3.74 acres and then the BRAS for 1.15 acres.
I think it's BLR? Is it BLR?
It's BLR for 3 points.
You said M, MLR.
I'm sorry, I apologize. It's, it's already getting late and I'm gonna apologize. So, so B, BLR, the, the two of us together, we're gonna make a mess of this thing. So, uh, BLR for 3.74 and BRAS for 1.15.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I second that.
Okay, um, Mr. Array.
Hold on.
I'm sorry?
Jen, I, and I have a question. Uh, now's the time for that. Where is the 1.15? I mean, that whole thing can't be 1.15.
I think it's what was there requested? Is that their request? Todd?
Well, the request was for 3.74 BLR and 1.15 AS, and I just not sure which part is which.
The, the actual center is the BLR. It's the part out front. It's the BRAS as I, as I recall.
Yeah, the BLR was the whole thing. Yeah, the BLR was the whole thing originally, Scott. It was 4.89 was BLR already. They're just asking for 1.15 to go to AS.
But he's. 1.15.
So here's, here's the requested map. Um, the, there's BRAS on the front part. It looks like it goes to the building footprint to start.
So it's the yellow outline, right, Jen?
Uh, the yellow outline's the issue boundary, so the BRAS would look like this. And then the BL would be behind it in this, in this area back here.
Okay, thank you.
So you basically come through the BL, the BRAS to get back to the shopping center?
And, and before we. So, so I, I'd like to know the staff recommendation. I mean, it sounds like a. I may sound like a broken record, but it's very important because you do the work. What do you recommend?
Staff recommendation was to keep the BLR because we don't support AS at this time.
And plus, the site is surrounded by residential use, um, there is a good justification why it's currently BLR. Um, just to be compatible with the surrounding residential use.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd's made a motion and and then we had a second, there's no further discussion, are we ready to take a vote? All right, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka? Mr. McGinnis?
Oh.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now on to five dash zero two one, Ms. Brophy and Mr. Warren, Ms. Brophy, do you wanna go first?
Sure. So, um, this property, um, it's actually in the Honey Go, um, CRD. And um, they want the back portion along Forge Road, which the back portion is actually the bottom of the screen that we're looking at. Um, for townhomes, there's already an approved uh townhome development adjacent to it called the Shops of Perry Hall, um, as well as some retail there. The planning staff had mentioned it is consistent with master plan twenty thirty. And there was no major issues listed on there from any of the other departments. And I know a couple of us have, um, you know, been a bit of a broken record about needing residential development and product within, um, all of Baltimore County, and just within the CRD, it makes a lot of sense, there's already commercial, there's towns, there's singles around there, it 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 fits into where it is.
Mr. Warren, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm not gonna, it's be a broken record to say that I'm in favor of of providing additional housing. Uh, I would say that that center across the street was like one of the first mixed-use uh developments that was done, and it's, it's a home run, so. Um, so, I mean, I I I would strongly recommend putting, allowing to have this housing, so.
Is Bel Air Road off to the left?
Can you say that one more time, Chris, sorry?
Is Bel Air Road off to the left? Yeah, okay, so this. Right, so, look, so this is, this is the, um, the old seven eleven that was the dentist office. And then I think there's the road, they have the road barriers up here so that it ends right past the dentist office. Uh, I just wanna make sure I'm, I've got the site correct in my head, okay?
Know about the barriers myself, but I, yeah, you see a dentist office up there, yeah.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
I I can tell you that the community is very strongly opposed to this.
Is there a specific reason, Bev? Because like I said, I mean, that shops at Perry Hall, that's that mixed use is literally right next to it, and this would be, I mean, it seems like the towns fit right in there, it's not like, it's not that it's along a main road or anything, it's on Ford, so.
Yeah, it, it's kinda like a global issue, Emily, as opposed to, you know, like this specific community, um, the community feels like, you know, they just, they just got uh, a new elementary school and a, a middle school open in the fall. Um, but that'll still leave all the schools at capacity, Bel Air Road has a huge amount of traffic. And it's, you know, it's the traffic, uh, public safety, school capacity. It's a global issue in the Perry Hall area, and that's why they're not happy about it.
A- and Bev, I I understand that, you know, we're jamming all of our development into a small envelope. Um, so it's making everyone cramped inside the urdle, but if we're not gonna expand the urdle, then we gotta develop sites, I mean, we gotta provide housing, so.
A- and Todd, I have to tell you, when I first got on the planning board, I didn't like it when you said that kinda stuff. But I hope, hopefully, I'm a lifelong learner and I've broadened my horizons a little bit. So I, I totally get that we need housing and badly in Baltimore County. But, um, Perry Hall has really taken the hit in terms of development, so. And and I'm just sharing with you how I think I'm pretty well in touch with the community. And they don't, they don't want this. There's, it's one of those deals where it's, there's not a right and wrong answer.
Sorry, I'm just gonna interject, um, five zero zero two, technically, um, because of the broad, like, no one sequestered that, you all approved it. So if there was any change here, that was put in by the Forge, Forge Reserve HOA as a down zone on this property, they're conflicting. Like, I, kind of identical, going after the same thing, but opposite ends of the spectrum, so Forge Reserve HOA put in five zero zero two to down zone this property, and then, um, a rep lawyer in representing a, um, someone else, put in five zero two one to up zone. So I just wanna bring that to everyone's attention, that those are two overlapping issues that are kind of going at opposite things, um.
Got it, so my motion, so my motion would have to amend both, correct, right, Ainsley?
Y- yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, 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 Ms. Ainsley, what is the department's uh uh, recommendation for this?
So, um, with the conflicting issues, we recommended to keep the zoning the same. Um, for this issue in particular, five zero two one, they're asking to jump up from the current zoning, which is mostly DR three point five H and then a small portion of CB, community business as well, they're trying to jump up all the way to DR sixteen. Um, there is no DR sixteen around, so this would be creating a a spot zone, there's no DR sixteen in any adjacent parcel, but then there's also really no DR sixteen in the greater area. So it's, it's not really a, a zone that's, um, compatible with the surrounding area. And additionally, the place type per the master plan for this area is established neighborhood, which is defined by low and medium density residential. Um, and DR sixteen is a much higher residential density. So those are kind of the reasons why we, um, recommended that the zoning stay the same.
May I ask why, what the zoning is on this, like, how did they build the townhomes on the center then? On that mixed-use center that's there?
Piece of dirt that's BL is a, is like a center now with mixed use that has towns and retail in it. It's just, it's an old Google Earth, that's all.
Is it a pub?
I don't know, it might be, Jen, it was that shops.
I mean, it's, it's like, it's like.
That big piece you're doing there.
Something we've like touted as like one of the, you know.
I don't think it's a pub.
So it did go through zoning then, Bev, that shops at Perry Hall, the retail and the towns?
Yeah, I believe so.
Shops at Perry Hall were a result of council, the councilman changing the text of, which allowed the integration of senior housing with the, uh, retail.
What do you think? Make a motion.
I think, uh, a- actually, excuse me, um, I'm in favor of, of, uh, supporting this staff recommendation.
Yes, I thought we already had a motion.
Yeah, I thought, because Todd and I sequestered it, do we, do we make our motion first, or?
Okay, yeah, that's, and that's fine.
And Emily?
Sure, so, um, to incorporate, and thank you, Ainsley, for pointing that out, um, I'd like to make a motion to first of all, amend, um, the board's approval of five dash zero zero two because that's conflicting with five dash zero two one, and I'd like to recommend, um, for five dash zero two one, that we accept, um, the petitioners' change to DR sixteen.
So I second that motion. Motion.
All right, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
You'll need to come back to me at the end, I've gotta check something.
Okay, Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hafer, are you ready to vote or not quite yet?
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, uh, motion carries. All right, next on to five dash zero two four, Ms. Panero and Ms. Ms. Brophy, Ms. Panero, do you wanna go first?
Sure, Todd, you wanna give your speech of more, uh, housing?
I I I'll save my breath for right now, but.
So, this is different from the previous one, as this is, uh, age-restricted, uh, townhomes. Um, it's consistent with the master plan, no impact on the schools, thankfully. Um, it's a ten-acre property adjacent to an already-approved project. Um, they are working with the community on road issues, I believe it's gonna connect to, um, Magnolia. Um, I believe that's bottom right corner, I believe this, Magnolia is the, the bottom, um, border.
It's to the right. Magnolia is to the right of this.
Okay, which has a brand-new, um, it's a brand-new road and a brand-new traffic signal, which is unused. Um, so it's not a failing, um, in our, um. I don't think you, I'm looking through my notes, do you have? Oh, they, they have listened to the community, which is always helpful, um, they have reduced the number of proposed units um, in response to the community, um, output, they've gone from sixty-five to forty-five. Um, I did look up the information, um, on. It's compatible, the use, it's compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, sorry, I keep coming on the wrong one, Emily, while I'm looking for the information, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, very similar to what Katie said, I mean, Jen, if you wouldn't mind zooming out, I mean, you can see there's a lot of DR one, DR two, three point five, five point five, all in that area. It is a heavily residential area, and I know, you know, Bev, we always talk about, we always wanna balance, um, homes with school capacity as well. So for this, since they're age-restricted homes, it shouldn't have any impact, because obviously Perry Hall High is really close to there as well. Um, so I think, you know, with the aging population of the county, it really does require this type of housing, and it's kind of the perfect spot to put it in.
So, uh, this literally is within walking distance of my house, I drive there every day. Um, again, it's not a, it's not a clear-cut yes or no, this is a great idea, this is a horrible idea. I can tell you, the community, you, Em- Emily, you're a hundred percent right, it's fifty-five and older. Um, that seems to be a solution that a lot of developers are using now to, to develop property. Uh, because it, it does not have a negative impact on the schools. And we need, we need fifty-five and older housing. Um, I'm on the board of the Perry Hall Improvement Association, and we've had, um, a lot of action, people showing up at, at our board meetings strongly opposing, um, the development. It, it's a, it's a unusual property in that it is surrounded by, um, a lot of, you know, like, very, um, usual kinds of developments that were built in Perry Hall in the seventies and eighties. Uh, there's a lot of traffic on, on Honeygood Boulevard because Joppa View Elementary is there, so in the morning and the afternoon, there's a lot of traffic jamming because of traffic. Um, the commu- I can tell you the community is strongly opposed to this development. Um, I think there could be, there could be other development in the area that would be, that would have a much more negative effect, obviously, than fifty-five and older houses, so I have to tell you, I'm a, I'm, I'm sort of torn about this one.
It's inside the urdle, right?
It is inside the urdle, yep.
And this is an out, well, actually, it's not an outdated map, uh, it might be, I don't know, but to the right of the project, that's where the town, the approved town, uh, the approved project is for, for additional housing.
Yeah, and Bev and I, look, I'm on Honeygo Boulevard a lot too, and when we went there for the public hearing, it's not the easiest place to navigate traffic lines, but the good part about the fifty-five plus, I mean, they're not going out during rush hour, do you know what I mean? They're, they're, they're.
Emily, speak for yourself.
Speak for yourself, I do.
Lance, you're out at like four AM, that's not rush hour.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna beat the horse, but.
It's less likely that they're adding to the traffic congestion during rush hour, I'm gonna restate that for some of my friends here. Less likely.
I will reluctantly agree with that.
Again, we, if gotta be said, we got it, we, we wanna have growth in our community, we gotta have new housing, and the cost of housing is a huge problem, so we need to, we need to put it somewhere. Bev, they wanna live by you because you live in a nice area, so, you know.
I, I hear you, Todd, it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a national problem, and we're dealing with it locally. There's just no, there's no great solution to it.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, can we entertain a motion?
I motion that the, um, property be re-zoned to DR five point five.
Before we, I think I, I need to make a recommendation here, I would always like to hear staff recommendation. Before even we do anything, so.
You have the staff recommendation, they gave it to you on the sheet, it's on there.
Yeah, but you would, I want them to really state, yeah, just like we had this coffee, this should be a part of it.
I agree.
Um, I'll just quickly say that we recommended that, um, the zoning stay DR one. And we just felt that the character of the community was better suited for lower density, it's a wooded area, very narrow road. Um, you addressed some of those problems, so you all can move forward as you see fit.
But it is, the staff did agree that it is consistent with the master plan.
Correct?
Yes.
Which we just all.
Okay. Now we have a motion and a second, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy? Ms. Brophy? I think we lost Ms. Brophy.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Oh, there you go, thank you. Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel? Oh, he's, he's.
I'm here. I'm back.
Okay, you're back. Thank you. Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my my vote to yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted. Okay, five dash zero two four, Ms. Panero and Ms. Brophy.
That's what I just did.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's been a long week. Don't worry.
Forgot, forgot to cross it off. Okay, five dash zero two five, Mr. Warren. We're not going backwards.
Yeah, please no backwards. All right, I should have gotten ready for this. I apologize.
This is your Marina bill.
Yeah, this is the one I I put in. Oh, no, I didn't put this down.
The truck will put it in.
Okay. So this is a upgrade to a very old Marina that's already in place. There was a lot of input against this. I guess the big challenge is that it's RC two now and to put in the the BMB to to increase the Marina would, you know, change the area around the facility quite a bit. But, you know, it's, it's a I've, I've said for a long time that we need to utilize the the preserved areas that we have. So the bay is one of our treasures. And the way to do that is to have a Marina where people can put their boats in and travel about and sit and enjoy the beauty that our Chesapeake Bay provides. So that was my reason for for putting, putting this in. I'll leave it at that.
Questions or comments from the board?
Can we zoom out a little bit? Thank you.
So, so Todd, is this a business right now? Because I remember this one from the public hearing and there were like a lot of people against it at the public hearing. Like, what, what is there now?
From what I I remember from the meeting, there's a small Marina, like a very old Marina there now. That's, that's how I understand it. And, you know, this would build a modern Marina with, you know, you know, completely redo the kind of eyesore small Marina that's there today.
I I'll just say, I I haven't seen anything about like making a, you know, renovating the Marina or anything like that. Their request was to expand. As you can see, it kind of goes up into that like farm area, kind of up above the Marina, away from the water a little bit, across Bird River Road. They were pretty vague in what, in terms of what they meant for expanding the Marina, but they have been operating out of compliance. They've been a nonconforming business for a long time and now they're asking for an expansion. And so with that information, in addition to during agency review, Epps told us that BMB, the zone that they have requested would not be a good fit for the area due to the critical area designation. You can see their comment on our official recommendation. We ultimately decided to suggest that this zoning stay RC, it's actually split RC two, RC fifty currently. So we recommended that it stay the same.
Yeah, there was a whole opposition on this. Looking at my notes, I didn't hear.
Todd, to your point, if you're going to want, if you're going to protect the Chesapeake Bay, then RC fifty is the zoning to do that because specifically to protect the water quality consistent with the critical area.
Yeah, I I I hear what you're saying. I I just said that if if we protect it and can enjoy it, then, you know, that's not.
Why you don't rezone, I mean, if you want to rezone a lower part of the property, if that's your intent, you don't rezone the entire property from the RC fifty.
That's, that's fair enough. I I'll, I, again, I'm, I tend to be pro-business and pro-housing. I put this in because.
You have to also be pro-protection of the bay if you want to have a Marina that's going to be servicing.
Right. I hear you.
And I I I just want to.
Riverway dump is so I, you know, we have a dump there. So I'm not really too worried about protection of the bay when kind of a dump just above this.
The county has an obligation to protect from water runoff to protect the bay, even though there's a quote dump. There's a landfill that has to meet all, all standards.
I just want to reiterate what Peter said earlier, that there was a considerable amount of opposition at the meeting to this, to the rezoning.
And Bev, I mean, you're, you're really ingrained in that area. Is the opposition because they don't want a Marina there or they just don't want a large one? Director. I mean, it could be a small piece.
Yeah. And and I, you know, I'm in District Five, but I, you know, Emily, I'm not real familiar with this particular Marina. But my notes indicate that they're, they're fine with the existing Marina. They just they're concerned, they, they haven't been in compliance, first of all, with regulations and they're concerned that if it's expanded, if they can expand it, that they're not going to I know, I know this is redundant, that they're not going to be good neighbors. But I think they're fine with the existing Marina. I think they're fine with upgrading the facility, but not changing the zoning.
Do we happen to know the acreage of the existing Marina? Because kind of like, you know, Steve had mentioned, I mean, is it something that we don't rezone the whole twenty acres? But if if there's like an existing piece that's already a Marina that's just nonconforming, I mean, do we rezone that to allow them to do, to allow them to become conforming? And then to your point, Bev, upgrade it?
Yeah, they're only asking for fifteen acres just to be, there's four point nine acres. They're not asking to rezone. I mean, this, I've been involved in the past with these critical bay issues. There's going to be a ton of setbacks and other issues. That's the challenge. If you don't do, you're going to get five acres out of the twenty acre or that of the fifteen acres that you asked for because there's like I don't know what it is, but you can't be so far from the bay and you can't, you know, if there's a slope and so. Like I, like I said, and then at some level businesses are not viable if they're not big enough to be viable. So, you know, that's the other challenge you have. And again, I haven't spent time with this client or this particular Marina. I haven't spent a ton of time on it. But, you know, I I just I think that you know, we, we need to, you know, support small businesses. That's, that's why I put in this.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Warren, my notes indicate that not a single person that supported it. All this figure against this. And and they are very sensitive. They want to keep it the way it is.
Everybody in the whole county wants it to be kept as it is. So everyone but me, maybe. I might be the only idiot. So somebody can, somebody can make a motion. I I'm not going to, I'm not going to fall on the stake on this one, so.
Well, I was just going to say before you do that, Todd, though, I mean, Jen, is there any way for you to draw that kind of mapping box over the existing boatyard to see if it's maybe five acres or something and you kind of come up with some type of compromise?
They do have a special exception for five and three quarter acres for the boatyard. That was from the sixties.
Yeah, I I will also say like, we don't know, like I said, they were pretty vague about what they meant when they said expansion. So I don't think it's really worth your time to draw like a map over just the existing Marina or because we don't really know what they, where they want to expand or how they want to expand. So I'm just putting that out there. I don't, I don't.
No, and that's helpful. That's helpful, Kathy. You said the five point three acres, they already have a special exception?
Five and three quarters.
A five and three quarters, okay.
And and is there a difference between a Marina and a boatyard? Because there's also BMM. And I'm wondering why they are looking for.
Yeah, I was actually going to bring that up in a little CZMP history on this site is in twenty sixteen, they actually requested BMM on this site. And the Department of Planning, the County Council and the Planning Board all recommended that the zoning stay the same. So my assumption is because they were denied in twenty sixteen, the BMM, now they're, they're trying a little bit. To my knowledge, BMB is a little more restrictive than BMM. So I guess this is just another attempt to change the zoning.
Well done, Ainsley.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Mrs. Ainsley. I don't think we should be sitting here trying to draw a map to see, to get what they want, where they are going. I think it's really a waste of time for us to be doing the mapping for those who are seeking change.
Well, then, in that, in that order, I'll just make this, the motion needs to be made. I'll make the motion that we grant them BMB for fifteen point eight five acres and RC two for four point nine six acres.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hayfer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Halepka?
No.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. McGinnis? Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Okay.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Thank you, Todd.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yeah.
Mr. McGinnis?
Unknown caller.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess Mr. Hinton's off again. Are you on?
Mr. Heinel and Mr. McGinnis have left, but Mr. Hinton is still here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Heinel, thank you. All right, next issue is five dash zero four four, Ms. Panero.
Oh, I I removed this from the question list for you today. I apologize.
This was the one that was removed, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next one is five dash zero six eight. Bev?
Give me a minute. So yeah, this is one of the neighborhood commons. I'm sorry, am I? I'm good, right?
Yes.
So this is one of the neighborhood commons one that I think I got good clarification on. The neighbors in that community support downzoning. And there were probably over twenty people in attendance at, at the meeting. So I think that I I'm comfortable with the final staff recommendations in in response to the needs of the community.
The staff didn't downzone it.
Yeah, so Todd, the, I didn't make myself clear. Looking at the whole issue of the neighborhood commons, I thought that that was a reasonable request. But I now understand that the neighborhood commons that those areas that are asking for neighborhood commons designation are protected by easements and covenants and HOAs and so forth. So I'm comfortable with the final staff recommendation.
It's a school, isn't it?
Orms Elementary, yep.
But it goes against HOA property on this particular one.
So we're making a, do, are you going to make a motion to staff recommendations or would you like me to do that?
That would be great if you would do that, Todd.
I I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
All right, folks, three more, unless you want to pull out anything else. Five dash one four three by Ms. German.
Give me a second. Sorry. Yeah, so for one four three, I'm just, and this is more of an, I guess, information for me is why is the staff opposed to the RC seven versus the RC five?
Um, I mean, anyone else can jump in. I had just noted through this one, it's touching RC five on all sides. RC seven here is not really necessary. It's a strip of county owned land that may have I I don't have in front of me like off the top of my head, but it very well might have, you know, forest buffer or some other environmental restrictions. So it it just felt unnecessary to devalue the land and change the zoning to RC seven when it's, you know.
So Ainsley, help me with this. And again, this is learning for me. How does RC seven devalue the land?
Well, because it's a lower, there's less allowance and RC seven. Well, because it's a lower, there's less allowance in RC seven.
Right. The density is much lower, Bev. It functions outside the hurdle the way that the NC zone works inside. And here's county-owned property, which is not going to be, I mean, it's protected because it's county-owned. Same way that a county park may be owned inside the Beltway or inside the hurdle. And so it's, you know, could the county sell it in the future? Yes, but if it's RC, you know, seven, it's probably going to have low value. So it functions like the NC zone does inside the hurdle.
It can be traded too, so.
Yeah.
So it has value on a trade too, so.
But it also is probably, as Ainsley said, serves as probably part of the forest buffer behind the residential.
Yeah, and the place type for this is rural residential and RC five is a rural residential zoning distinction. So the RC seven just didn't really feel necessary.
Okay. So, should I make a motion?
Go ahead, Bev, if, if everybody's finished.
Okay, so because the request is made by the County Council, how does that work? This is what they want to do, right? So, yeah, asking.
Well, Peter, I think everybody knows that David Marks has pretty aggressively tried to downzone a lot of property in District Five. So this, this just kind of goes along with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to make a motion, Bev?
Yeah, so for five dash one four three, I moved to accept the final staff recommendations.
I second that.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next we have, oh boy, my eyes are going, one dash zero four, one, one, five, one, six, six, one, five, one, six, one.
And this is my last one, I think.
We hope so, Todd.
Yeah, I know. I filed my resignation after this.
Who would I scream at?
Yeah, who would you yell at? Exactly. All right, so I, I believe, this is a belief based on conversations I've had, that the councilman put this in as a same to same, to get input from the community. And to be able to communicate with, you know, the representatives. And what the hope of the developer or the person putting this in or asking for this to be put in. This is a large shopping center that is looking to be redeveloped. And that they're going to put a combination, car wash, gas station, a, a big kind of like change to the center there. So, I'm trying to find exactly what they asked for. I believe it's BMAS. But I'm trying to find it right now, so give me one second.
It was filed same to same.
Right, but by the county, by the county councilman. So BM CCC for a car wash. So it's actually a car wash, not a, I had to find my notes before I, should have done that before I spoke, but it's going to be for a car wash to redevelop the center. So, and I believe with CCC, they still have to get, there's still some additional stuff they have to do to get, to be able to do that. But BM CCC is what they're, they're requesting here.
Okay, so we are voting to keep it the same?
No, no, we're not.
No change.
We're not voting to keep it the same. It's BL today. And we're, we're, my motion would be to make it BM CCC.
Okay, Todd's made a motion to make it BM CCC. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, are we looking at five dash one six one?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is the Old North Plaza Mall?
Yep.
Yeah. Why, why BM CCC and not BL? CCC. Do you need BM to get the car washed?
I, I think maybe. I'm not certain. Um, this isn't my specialty, so.
It should be after all these years on the board.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, because I don't know, and you probably know more than I do, I'm fine modifying mine to BL CCC. Is, I, I don't, I don't know. Because I don't know the difference between how much, BM may be too aggressive, so. BL CCC is what my motion would be.
So, okay, that, you modified your motion, Todd?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you, Steve, for the help on that one.
Well, if I may, I think at least, I know Gane knows these zoning classifications much better than I do. So I don't know if BL or BM, Gane and you're, does it impact the desire of the applicant to do a car wash?
No, the car wash will be on the CCC and they will still need special exception, even with the CCC.
My understanding, my understanding is that they would need community input and, and a special assessment to do that, so. So, again, so I'm fine with the BL CCC from the BM CCC.
I second that. Thank you.
Question, do they need to rezone 39 acres for a car wash?
I think they want, I don't know how to draw this at this point, nor do I want to draw this where they're going to put the, I know it's a dilapidated center and they're looking to to, to do that. The, the, I think what they'll end up doing is entering into a covenant with the County Council for one point, you know, whatever. I think, and Steve, you can answer this probably better than I can, but don't you have to have like 1.5 or two acres to do a car wash? There's like a limit. You have to have a certain amount of space for that, so. And I don't, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but it's, it's something like that.
Okay, we have, anybody other discussion? We have a motion and a second? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Hen, um, Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh my goodness, I think we are at our last issue.
Wait, Todd, Todd has.
Done, I'm done.
Five.
If it's my issue, withdraw it.
All right, Todd, let me get through this. Five dash one eight four. Bev?
Okay, um, again, there were probably plus or minus 30 people at the meeting who supported downzoning. My concern and question had to do with the, the DR one neighborhood commons, 69 acres, but that has, those questions have been answered in my head. So I'm supporting the final staff recommendations.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all so much. And Annisley, you did a great job your first meeting. We really appreciate everything. Board members, this is the conclusion. And as a reminder, our next work session will be on Tuesday, April 16th. We will be discussing sequestered issues in the Council District Three and Six. Please submit any sequestered issues to the staff by 4:00 PM on Monday, April 15th.
And Todd, you should leave them to two, only.
Only two?
Yep.
I, I may just sequester every issue just for you.
All right, I want to thank the staff for doing such a great job. Thank the board members. Can I please, please, please have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you.
Okay.
I know tonight, tonight there were some questions that came up that we could have perhaps addressed before the meeting. And I would just urge all the board members, if you have any questions about the issues that we can address before we sit next Tuesday, we would appreciate that opportunity and think we could hopefully clarify some points that may not be clear. We want to make each of the meetings next Tuesday and Thursday go smoothly and quickly. And if we can work with you ahead of time, we welcome that chance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. All right, everyone, have a great evening and we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good night.
Have a great one, everyone.
And Kathy, I got yours.